The Lindbergh Schools Board of Education Workshop 1566 is called to order. Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Do I have a motion? I don't think mine's working either. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Problem solving.
So moved.
Motion by Matt?
Second. Second.
Second by Megan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, motion passes six zero. And we will move on to our discussion topics and we will start with Dr. McKinney.
Thank you very much. If we could go to the next slide, please. Tonight, Human Resources Report, really tonight is a progress report, if you will, on the goals that we established back in April of last year at that workshop. We mentioned several things we are hoping to accomplish this year, things that we were implementing, things we were researching, things we were investigating. We won't touch on every single topic from the Compass Report tonight, but we have five that we wanted to highlight for you tonight that we've made significant progress in and we feel are important to the strategic goals of the district. So I would like to call up Jamie Cavato and Jessica Franklin to the, to the front, to the panel table. They will be presenting on a couple of these slides tonight. The five things, five topics we're discussing tonight are student-teacher partnerships, which are going extremely well, classified supervisor training. We do a lot of training with our principals, but we haven't always included our classified supervisors in such training, so that's been a major initiative this year and Mrs. Cavato's done an amazing job with that. Jessica's here to talk about a well-being program update and Jamie will also talk about FMLA and workers' compensation updates. We've done work this year to educate our staff on their rights and, and let them know how these programs work. And then finally, we wanted to talk about a topic that we've been, that was an investigate on our compass goal, which is teacher evaluation renewal and tell you about what we've done to investigate that this year. So with that, we will move to the next slide, please. And our first topic is our student-teacher program partnerships. I would remind everyone that our three main categories in human resources is recruit, support, and retain a premier workforce. So all of our topics are divided into these three categories: recruit, supporting the team that's here, and then retaining those great, those great employees. So all of our, our pieces fall under those. So we want to talk about recruit just a little bit, and this is where our student-teacher program partnerships live. And we've had an amazing year. We've had our, our largest number of student teachers in the district at one time this current school year, which is really altruistically a benefit to the field and preparing teacher, future teachers for their work in this field. However, it also benefits the district in that we do end up hiring quite a few of these people and we get to see them at work. And then also, they also help us with substituting, frankly. We have a, an MOU with each university that says that in times of substitute shortages, we get to access these people. So we do get some fringe benefits from having these folks in our, in our district. And so the, the student-teacher program partnerships, just to give you the numbers, Spartan Academy, Missouri Baptist, which is a full-year program, we have four people in the Spartan Academy teaching the entire year with us. We have Mizzou Senior On-Site, also a full-year program. We have one student teacher from there. UMSL Studio, also a full-year experience, fifteen teachers. So full-year experiences are somewhat unusual. Then the more traditional student teaching experiences, we have thirty student teachers in all the other universities. And so total number of student teachers in the district this year is fifty. And that's, that's a big number. So we want to say thank you to our teachers for being willing to take on these students and it really is a give back to the entire state, really, but also the field of education. Want to thank Jamie Cavato and Sarah Hammond for researching these partnerships with Missouri Baptist, UMSL, and Mizzou. And we're, we're just really excited about, about this very robust program ongoing in our schools right now. So be happy to answer any questions about student-teacher and Lindbergh Schools partnerships.
How many of our teachers, our student teachers do we end up hiring usually? Or is it just very?
That is a really good question. I don't think I could even ballpark that, other than to say that the, the Mizzou program, it's, it's high. We've had, I would just say that the, the full-year programs, we hire quite a few of those people because we see the, see them for an entire year. They become part of the building culture, principals know them. So there is a high rate of, of retention. As far as the traditional programs, it's probably not, not as high, but still, out of fifty people, if we were to bring back, you know, ten or fifteen, that's, that's really a good recruitment tool. And we can reach out for high, hard-to-fill areas, too. For instance, I know that we've been searching for band student teachers. That's, that's an area that is difficult to fill and we've just recently hired a student teacher in the past couple of years for band. So anytime we can get those areas to have people in and see them and teach them about our culture, that's, that's a plus, too.
For a, for a student that's here for a year, how many mentor teachers are they usually interacting with?
So the programs are a little bit different, but just generally, I would say at the first time, the first segment of it is observation, so they're, they're around a lot of different people. Let me speak to the Mizzou Senior On-Site, in particular. They spend the entire first semester in an elementary school and they're in every single grade level, in the class, supporting, observing, volunteering, deciding what they're going to do. And then at the semester break, they decide what, where they want to spend their actual practical time. And then they're with a single teacher the rest of the year actually teaching, co-teaching. So the onsite, the, the full-year programs are very good for students, student teachers. Alright, we will keep moving. The next segment is about support and retention and this has to do with our classified supervisor leadership training. I'm going to turn it over to Jamie Cavato to talk about that.
Alright, this is a program that's pretty near and dear to my heart because I love training leaders and this was a group of leaders in our district that we just missed out. And I think it's very common because like Dr. McKinney said, we have a lot of trainings with teachers and aspiring teachers with the student teachers and, and things of that nature. But a lot of times when you talk about classified supervisors, they miss out on a lot of that professional learning. So for Lindbergh Schools this year, one of our goals was to start meeting with this group and believe it or not, it's twenty-one supervisors, so that to me is a pretty large group. When you look at building principals and seeing how many principals you have and how many individuals we meet with, so it's twenty-one supervisors from seven departments, facilities, community ed, technology, security, communication, business, and nurses. And we've met so far twice this year. We're going to have our third meeting in February. And essentially, the goal is to provide support for these leaders and to provide them with the tools to take back to their teams to, to grow within their department. Learning topics this year so far have been policy review and how to communicate with those employees in the department about our policies and practices. Another portion, this last time we met, was to talk about how to support employees' well-being and different resources. So if employees come to supervisors with certain issues, a big folder of activities they could, they could do and meet with staff on an ongoing basis to support them. Also, how to conduct investigations and how to document. And they've done an outstanding job with that this year and we've worked together to really build that relationship because those supervisors, if there's anything they need to walk through with an employee, it's with me. And now this year, they know the process, they know the questions I'm going to ask, they know the follow-up. And it's been from just our relationship that we built together during our meetings. And then the last piece that we've talked about is recruitment and retention because those departments struggle a little bit with that. So we've talked about possibly this summer doing a job fair here at Lindbergh, just for support staff and what that would look like. So that's in the works with a couple individuals that, that we'll meet and plan on and doing that. And then we meet in February and our February goals are to look at different topics in HR right now and, and how to deal with issues in the workplace, definition of the, the quiet quitter and things like that, and how can we support individuals in the workplace to where they consistently come to work and they stay with our organization. So that, right now, and one of the things that I gave out to our group that we haven't really dug into, that we will next school year, is the book Leaders Eat Last. So asking questions from that book, how do you lead? What qualities make you a great leader? And what is the mission and vision of your department? So that's something that we're going to work on, ongoing for next school year.
Any questions about classified leadership training? Alright, thank you, Jamie. Our next topic, also crosses over in from our, in our support and retention categories, is our wellness program platform that's been going, undergoing some changes. So Jessie's, Jessica's going to talk about that.
Hi, guys. Thanks so much for having me. I just wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about the wellness program platform change that we just underwent at the beginning of the month. Our wellness team started meeting at the end of last school year to talk about our platform that we use. We were finding with our work with Brown and Brown and Health Source Solutions that there were other platforms out there that just had better services to provide to our employees. So we started investigating what different platforms were out there. We met in June and got three different demos, once we narrowed it down to those three that we wanted to see. And in September, we selected the Navigate platform. It ended up being a district cost savings of about $8,000 and the benefits have been wonderful. It's very user-friendly. The tech response time from their customer service is very fast. There are lots of benefits for our employees. There's lots of different activities for employees to use on there. And if you'll go to the next slide, there is a little screenshot of what it looks like whenever the employees log on to that site. It's been very easily personalized and so we've been able to work with the Navigate team to get the site to look like it belongs to the Lindbergh Well-Being Program. And they have been very quick to work with us with any changes that we've needed. The site, what I love about it is it incorporates all of the pillars of well-being, so it's not just for physical well-being, it incorporates everything. And there are lots of incentives for people available. We're using all digital rewards, so they can log in and get different incentive prizes for completing all of their tasks. And there's a really great resource hub on there for people that has all of our benefits information for our different health benefits that the employees get in there, as well as different workouts, and they can get recipes and there's just all kinds of things on there. So we just had a meeting with them today. We just launched two weeks ago and they said that typically with their rollouts at the six-month mark, it's usual to have about thirty percent engagement and Lindbergh's already at twenty-eight percent of eligible employees that are on there and active. So it's been a really great thing.
One thing I would just add is that this system over the other one is easier to, to use. In the demo, I remember that you can simply do things that you already do and maybe your watch tracks and your watch will load into here. So if I'm, if I'm on a walk in my neighborhood or I'm doing those kinds of things, it's, instead of it just being on my watch like it always is, it's actually pushing it onto the site, so I'm getting my points and things for the incentive. So it's just a little bit more intuitive and a little bit more user-friendly than, and less expensive. That's one part that we didn't discuss, but it was $8,000 less than the plan we had before. So we like that, too.
I know that it just rolled out, but have you gotten any feedback from people that are engaging with it and what they're using it most for or what they're enjoying about it?
I haven't heard from people yet, which I'm taking is a good thing because I feel like if we have twenty-eight percent of people who have logged in and we're not getting a lot of feedback, I feel good about that. But the thing that I do like about this site is we do have the ability to talk with Navigate to figure out what is being used and what isn't being used so that we can personalize it better and send out push notifications to people.
Okay, there aren't any other questions. We will keep moving along. Thank you, Jessica. We're going back to Jamie for this one, so I'll just tee it up a little bit. We, we have in the last few years, and this year is no exception, a pretty high level of, of employees taking maternity leave, which is great. Young staff, lots of families, that's a good thing. One thing that we found in the last year or so were that people don't necessarily, when they're getting ready to start a new family, they're not poring over human resources, resources, right? They're not in there going through these books and looking at all the things that they're entitled to and, and the rules and regulations for FMLA and those kinds of things. And that's understandable. So what Jamie and Sarah Hammond have done this year is put together a really great package for new parents, so they know exactly what the district provides to support them in this exciting time. So I'll turn it over to Jamie to expand on that.
And Dr. McKinney's right, this is a resource you really don't look at until like you need it. I can remember having my daughter thirty-eight and going, where's, what is FMLA? So Brian's right, you know, it's, it's something that you don't just dive into and read about. So last year, where the conversations really started was during negotiations, there were a lot of questions that were brought forth and more clarification around FMLA. So we met over the summer and developed a slide deck for our staff. And the slide deck not only goes out at the beginning of the year now, along with, we didn't embed it with all of our vector training videos because I know that gets buried. So what we did is I think, within the first two weeks of school, we sent out an email to all staff that had a slide deck and that's what's linked in here that discusses FMLA and maternity leave. So it gives employees a good idea and at least now, if they do have questions, they can go back to these slides. Whenever they have issues that come up that they feel that it might be FMLA, obviously maternity leave is maternity leave, but FMLA can be if you have a medical issue going on with yourself or with your family and what does that look like? So we've spelled it out as much as we could in our slide deck and we also worked with ed council on developing those slides, too, so we were getting the right information out to our employees. The second link there is our slide deck on workers' compensation. And our goal with that was, not only last year, we talked to you guys about putting the workers' compensation form online, so it was no longer a piece of paper that was scanned to me. It was an online process, which now it expedites everything with workers' compensation. Someone gets hurt, it immediately goes into the system, notifies us here at Central Office, and Sarah Hammond and myself are in connection with Gallagher Basset, getting our employees to the appropriate healthcare that they need, depending on the situation. And some situations also don't require medical attention, but at least we have a great system to document now that's housed in our talent ed online system. And like, you know, I said, the goal with this is keeping employees informed and that they're not always asking questions and feeling like they're not prepared if a situation comes up. Now they are prepared. And, and I feel like now, over this being year two, in, in my office, that we have a real sound relationship with our staff members. They're very comfortable with calling and reaching out and asking, would this be FMLA? And if this situation would progress, what would this look like? And they already have the slides and they, they, they have the tools to where they can ask us questions and get the right answers quickly. That's all I had.
Any questions about that? Alright, and then finally, the next slide, this was our, this was a investigate topic for this year and it will move up to a research topic for next year, is renewal of our teacher evaluation program. It's currently called EPIC, which stands for Educator Performance Instructional, oh gosh, cycle, thank you, Educator Performance Instruction Cycle, Improvement Cycle, thank you. And it was developed based on Senate Bill 291, which was, became law in 2012 or 13, test my memory there. And it's basically said that all teacher evaluation programs will be similar and that they will align with the seven essential principles for effective educator evaluation in the state of Missouri. So it really set a baseline standard for all schools to use similar, similar criteria to evaluate teachers. There were several ways that you could accomplish this. You could buy a canned program from the University of Missouri called The Knee. You could use the one that Desi provided, which was pretty cumbersome. Or you could develop your own and at Lindbergh, we did develop our own. We had a committee of about fifty people and we developed our own and we rolled it out in, in full. It was piloted, of course, but then rolled, rolled it out in full around 2016. It's time to, to re, to, to review it again. It currently does, again, like I said, meet the seven essential principles of effective evaluation, but there always are new developments in how to best accomplish this. And so we're using this book, Teaching and Learning is, is highly involved in this and it's a partnership between the two teams. Using this book, we've been reading this for a while, which is a Robert Marzano book. And then next week, we will go to the, the conference that, these materials will be presented. This will be the strand that will be, Jamie and I will be participating. So that's next week, four days. And our goals are really to utilize the learning from the, from the conference to ensure that our program, the conference is national, is directed nationally to ensure that what we do utilize continues to meet the seven Missouri principles of effective evaluation. And we also want our program to align with the district's, our local goals here in our compass goals. So those are really our, our goals for this initiative. Happy to answer any questions about that. When we do move forward, you should also know that when we come back from this, we'll have some ideas, but we'll again have a big group with lots of stakeholders and voices on what this next instrument will look like. And it may not be a complete overhaul, it may just be a tweak or, because as I've read through this, we're, our, our instruments is, is pretty, is in pretty good shape. It's not a complete overhaul, which is good.
Yeah? When you say that there'll be a big group going into this, do you foresee any teachers being involved in it as well?
Lots of teachers, mostly teachers, yeah. The last committee was, was, the majority of people on the last committee were teachers, of course principals, leaders like Tara and myself as well.
Is there anything in particular from either the teacher's standpoint or your standpoint that you're looking specifically to change with the way we do things now?
We don't want the evaluation process to be about paperwork, you know, and we last did it, we talked about growth, not gotcha. And it's not, it shouldn't be a one-shot kind of thing. It shouldn't be a dog and pony. It shouldn't be a, okay, on, you know, April sixth, I'm coming to your room, so dress really nice and have this big, you know, wild presentation for us. It's more about lots of check-ins and having a, having a goal that starts the year and they go, you know, you go through that entire year and then some measurable things. And at the end, the teachers should feel like that they grew from that. It wasn't just pay, us doing paperwork to provide Desi that we evaluate our people. That's what I would say. I'd like to ask Tara to weigh in as well.
I think one of the things that we get excited about most in teaching and learning is how we connect professional learning with the evaluation process. So we've been talking a lot about how do we more, how do we personalize professional learning for teachers? Not everybody needs the same thing. So if we can do a better job of aligning what is in our evaluation system to our professional learning goals, then we are moving everything in the same direction to benefit our students.
Thank you. And that's, that is the HR report. We're happy to answer any questions about all of it or if not, thank you for your time.
Alright, and teaching and learning, actually, Dr. Mason and Dr. Lawson are going to come up and join us, but some of our teaching and learning goals actually overlap with the HR goals as well. So as you look at our teaching and learning compass, we have two primary goals in our teaching and learning compass. One is to really focus on a safe, collaborative, supportive environment for our students and that's where you start to reach into some HR goals that we'll talk about in terms of teacher survey and our work around inclusion. And then the second goal is really more on those instructional practices, how we look at curriculum instruction and assessment. So as you look at this first round of measurable goals in terms of safe, supportive, and collaborative culture, you'll see that we have some metrics that we really wanted to achieve. We talk about collective teacher efficacy. And collective teacher efficacy has been shown to have a significant impact on student learning. And basically what that is, is it's saying that if teachers all believe together that they are responsible for every student in the school, it has better outcomes for students. So to give you a specific example, when our teachers get together and they work as a professional learning community, I might be the English teacher on an eighth-grade team and there's another English teacher on another eighth-grade team. We are working together and looking at student data together and identifying how we get all of our kids moving towards the outcomes that we expect, as opposed to it's just the, you know, one hundred and twenty-five students that I teach. So it's this really collaborative process of being able to take ownership for students and use the data to really support the growth of all learners. So when we talk about collective teacher efficacy, that is a, has a huge effect size when you look at something like Hattie's research, which is a meta-analysis of what has the most impact on learning for students. So collective teacher efficacy is number one. So one of our big goals was to have our, our teachers give us feedback that we really have a collective efficacy within our building. So we'll take a look at that data. And then our goal to have eighty-five percent of our students participate in our social emotional learning screeners and then also to look at that data that we really wanted eighty percent or more of our students fitting within the, those low-risk areas. So if you go on to the next slide, Colin. So this is where we partnered, going back to the teacher survey, we partnered with HR. We, HR has done a yearly teacher survey and we specifically added some additional questions so we could get at the collective efficacy component. So you'll see here that we had a total of four hundred and fifty-seven employees take the survey of those. We were able to identify certified staff, classified staff, and then we also broke out our special school district staff, so we could see, you know, what the, what the experience is of our special education staff. And we were purposeful in making that both a certified and a classified group because we didn't, those numbers tend to be small and we didn't want the data to be identifiable. We wanted people to feel safe, to give really honest feedback. So that's where you see those, those three categories. Then when you go to the next slide, you can see the questions that we asked there and some of the data. So we really broke it down into a four-point scale, strongly agree, somewhat agree, somewhat disagree, and strongly disagree. So we were asking questions about the feeling of responsibility for all students in the school, about feeling valued, about our voices heard. And I, as an employee, is my voice heard, our students' voice is heard. My building has a positive learning environment overall, or my professional learning community, which is PLC, because we love acronyms, really collaborates well together. So that was kind of the, the scope of questions that were asked. People could put not applicable if it didn't fit. For some classified folks, a PLC wouldn't be something that would be relevant to their role. But this really gave us the opportunity to delve in, not just at a district level, but our principals also took this feedback and then applied it back, worked with their staff on, hey, what are you telling us? And then how do we move forward in this regard? And then when you go to the next slide, you can see the two questions that specifically revolved around our metric for identifying if we have teacher collective efficacy. So every staff member in my building feels responsible for every, for the success of every student. So our average there was three point one nine. Again, our goal was a three out of four. I'd love to see that even closer, but we definitely met the goal, so how do we continue to extend that? I'm intrigued because this survey was pretty early in the school year, it was in October, and we've done a lot of work this year with professional learning communities. And we are going, we're continuing to work with professional community, learning communities to provide support, expectations, building, professional learning. So I would anticipate that we'll see this number continue to grow. So I would anticipate that we'll see this number continue to grow in the work that we're doing as a district. And then the second question, my PLC works collaboratively to ensure the growth of every student's learning, 3.49%, again, correlated back to that work of our professional learning communities. So this is the first time we've really measured the goal like this. So it'll be a good baseline for us, for how we continue to watch the work that we're doing as a district and how we prioritize that.
When staff take the survey, do they say like what building they're associated with? Okay.
Yeah, so then all the, then the principals have the specific building data. There's also open-ended comments, so there's a lot of generalized feedback that principals can take and use for ongoing improvement.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome. Next slide, Colin.
Well, when will you redo this survey?
So I believe it's designed to be yearly in October. So it'll be a year-to-year comparison. We weren't planning on doing it again at the conclusion of this year.
All right, so on the classified side, we had 126 of our employees out of that group respond, which I was pretty pleased with because I think a total, or we're like at 338 for full-time classified staff members. So I was pretty pleased with, with that count for first time because I think that's one of the first times we've given out a survey and they've identified their department, right? So like Dr. Sparks said, we have real data to understand. Could you go the next slide, Colin? So ours were, again, the exact same questions, which I think probably next year, maybe for that group, we could tweak a couple of them since they're not in a building. So those questions, you know, they left a little more like they didn't answer or, you know, you couldn't really respond because they're, they're not in a building with students, not every one of them. You know, our central office, classified staff in our facilities, they're not in buildings like administrative assistants are. But the next slide is something that I'm pretty proud of. The two questions, when we look at, one of the goals when I came here to Lindbergh was to have someone oversee this group and ensure that they felt valued and they felt like a sense of belonging to Lindbergh schools and included. So the question, I enjoy coming to work. 89% responded they strongly agree or somewhat agree. And I felt really good about that because we've been very conscious in our efforts in HR to do a lot of professional learning with our admin assistants, bring in our facilities group over the summer and do a training with them and a luncheon, and our building assistants this fall. So a lot of work has been done with bringing everyone in to ensure that they feel connected to Lindbergh schools. And then the other question, I feel valued as an employee, 87% were their responses. So again, positive. I always like to see 100% because that's just how I am. So like Dr. Sparks said, this time next year, whenever we reevaluate, hopefully those numbers will go up. And that's all I had.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So the first data set includes both certified, classified, and special school district. And then the second data set is just classified?
Correct.
Do we have one for just certified?
We can definitely pull that out and get that in Friday packet.
Okay.
Yep. All right, so moving on in our teaching and learning goals, social emotional learning. So we had our first round of screeners in October and are able to share that data with you.
Sure, so we are still considering this as social emotional screening. So sorry, we are still considering this a pilot year. We have, we administered our first social emotional screeners in October. And it has, it, it went really well for our first try. We are going to do it again in March and have our second screener for the year. And then we will have some more details on the final process of what social emotional screening will look like at Lindbergh schools. But to go back to the compass goal that Tara shared earlier, this is aligned with the compass goal that Lindbergh schools will ensure a safe, supportive, and collaborative culture for our students and make sure that their needs are met. And the first, you know, data point is that 85% of our students will participate in the screener and, you know, happy to report that we did meet that goal. So we did have 85% of our students participate in this screener. Social emotional screeners demonstrate that 80% or more students are low-risk for social emotional concerns. And in some of the assessment platforms that we use, that is an easy tool to measure. We can actually get that particular metric. However, through this pilot process, we have found that some of the platforms do not give us a risk level. So I will not be able to provide a risk level to meet that measurement goal. So you'll see as I kind of move through those slides. So we have three different tools being piloted in the district this year. The first one on, to the left, is Satchel Pulse. We are, we administered that to Truman Middle School, sixth through eighth grade, and also at the high school 10th and 11th, or excuse me, 10th and 12th grade. The Panorama screening tool, we administered at Sperry Middle School and at the high school 9th and 11th grade. And then the SABERS screening tool, and that stands for Social Academic Emotional Behavior Rating Scale, we administered that to all elementary schools K through 5. So I, if you can, if you want to learn more about the particular tools that we're piloting, there's a link to the website and then also the actual questions that are asked are also linked on there, so you can go straight to those. On the next slide, so the Social Academic Emotional Behavior Rating Scale, I'm now going to refer to as SABERS from this point on because it's so long. So SABERS is something that, we are piloting it, but how, it's not so much about whether or not we're going to use the tool. It's, it's more of piloting on how we are going to use the tool. So it is in each building. Students in grades 3 through 5 have their own rating scale. We do not do that for students in K through 2. It's not very reliable for a kindergarten through second grader to rate their social emotional needs. It could vary from minute to minute, actually. But we do administer that 3 through 5. So when you see on the chart to the left where it says my SABERS, anytime you see my SABERS, that's going to refer to the student's rating scale. Then teachers also complete a checklist that is aligned to the same topics and questions that the students are asked. And then they do that 3 through 5. So here we can juxtapose, how did our students in grades 3 through 5 rate themselves? But how did teachers in grades 3 through 5 also rate those students? So we can see, was there any discrepancy in the way students report it? And so as you can see here, we have, for the students' rating, 86% of the students fall into that low-risk category. So there is not a no-risk category. I just want to make sure that's clear. It's, when you talk about social emotional needs, you never say never or no typically. So 86% of students rated, 88% of teachers rated students in the low-risk category. I think we can consider that a celebration and, you know, recognizing the amazing work that our teachers, support staff administrators are doing in their buildings to create that safe, supportive, and collaborative culture. So in this particular, with this particular screener, we can get that risk level and use that metric we had for our compass goal. So I also, because we have all of our teachers do the checklist K through 5, I have to the right, the, the overall K through 5 for every student. So we are taking a satellite view of this information at this point. But where we went with it from there is after we kind of looked at that satellite view of how our students are doing, how is Lindbergh doing overall? We can use this as program effectiveness when it comes to, how are we supporting our building administrators and our teachers? But then teachers can take it and move down from that satellite view into, okay, within my building, what are our scores? How are we supporting the overall, how are we supporting students overall? And then teachers can take and say, let's take a look at it from the classroom view. How am I, as a teacher, supporting our students overall in the classroom? Where are they rating? Are there any particular areas of concern or areas to celebrate it within the class? So with the Social Academic Behavior Rating Scale, SABERS, I already broke my rule, it does measure those things. There is a category for social, emotional, and academic behavior. So teachers can also break it down into those particular areas to see where students are excelling and where we maybe need to do some whole-class work or individualized work for students. So I will report that emotional behaviors was our highest ranking topic within the SABERS, and academic was the lowest. But I also want to say with the lowest, it was above 80, 85%. So we, it was still very high. So this information was shared with administrators who are doing some work within their buildings. I'm so fortunate to work with Dr. Mason and Maureen Stabler, and we're looking at it from the inclusion, equity, and diversity lens, but also looking at it from the, how do we use this as data to support our multi-tier system of support within our district? So that is how it's being used for, for, in the building. So if we go to the next slide, we have, we have a social emotional committee who was, we looked at several tools for, for screeners, and we narrowed it down to two. One was Panorama, and then I'm going to talk in a minute about another one called Satchel Pulse. So Panorama, we, like I said, are administering at Sperry Middle School and Lindbergh High School, 9th and 11th grade. And, and with this particular tool, we can choose the topics. There's like 24, 26 topics that you can choose from, from all over the social, emotional, inclusion, equity, diversity, belonging, all, anywhere you want to go with it, you could. The social emotional committee, along with Dr. Mason, and in the past, Dr. Map and Maureen Stabler, we chose these particular five topics. So the goal was to keep it small, keep it simple, and actually ask the questions we want answers to that we can actually do some work with. So that was really the ultimate goal. From, after choosing those particular topics, we took it to the Student Life Committee and asked for feedback and input on those particular questions, really wanting to make sure that we were honoring the voices of all of our stakeholders in the, in, I guess, their, how comfortable they were with the particular questions. So there's a little bit of controversy on this. It's actually kind of fun, but I'm going to share some fun. And the controversy is in the way we're presenting the numbers. And so a little bit of that came with how we are showing the, the outcome of each of these categories with the percent favorable. Now, some may argue that we're being really hard on ourselves because we are only looking on a scale of one to five, the percent favorable is four and five. And some may argue that why are you not including those who are just neutral with the particular, you know, with that particular topic? So it's up for debate, and we can discuss moving forward how we want to do the, how we want to do this. But just for sake of transparency and just showing the ways in which you can present data, we're just going to be hard on ourselves this very first time and, and look at just those four and fives. Although I know we can come back with more information on how we can make it look a little better. But for example, when you break down some of these questions, you will find that over 80% of the students in any particular topic with a particular question are either neutral or above. So if we did it like that and broke down the questions, we would see, our numbers would look a, a lot more positive. So just going to be hard on ourselves for this, to show this is the way Panorama presents the data. So I'm just kind of staying true to the process at this particular time. So I'll just give you a second to look at that.
Is there, because I know the next one is Truman and the other grades in the high school. Was there a reason we split them up or just, you know, kind of testing and feeling it out?
Yes, we did. We split them up so that we could do train, like, it kind of helped with the training because Dr. Mason, Maureen, and I went into the buildings and did how to administer the trainings, and then also followed up with how to interpret the results after the test was administered. And so to not have to have so many teachers in a particular setting go through, and it's not always that cut and dry, like some teachers might have a mix of 6th and 7th graders. So instead of doing a split of a platform, or assessment platform within a building, we kept Truman and Sperry completely separate. And then after we administered the assessment, we had the administrators and also teachers and PLCs and counselors look at the results to kind of see how do the different platforms reveal the data? And how do they, is it teacher-friendly? Do you like this tool? Does it tell us anything? Does it give us actions that we can take after we receive the data? So we're looking at it that way. And then at the high school, we want it, we considered 9th and 10th grade on the, you know, we wanted a low, a lower grade and a higher grade to participate in, in both of those.
So I just wanted to make a comment, and I think it's important to note that the reliability on the SABERS, you know, we could have our kids saying one thing and us adults think there's a whole difference. The fact that they were that close is pretty good, that our, our teachers and our kids are connecting in those relationships and they're knowing each other. You know, if the kids would have been at 80 and our teachers would have been at 50, then we'd be like, okay, disconnect. So I think that's really important that as we talk about this, that our teachers are building those relationships and understanding who their kids are in their classroom, which is huge, so that's, that's good.
The, the next slide is Satchel Pulse. Now, Satchel Pulse does not give us some of the same types of reports for, or the same, it doesn't, it gives us a lot of, I'm trying to find the right word. I should have had it before I came in. It gives us a lot of opportunity to manipulate the data in any which way we want to, which sometimes is fun to do, but sometimes it's kind of like, oh, it, it gives a lot of that subjectivity to the, the data that's kind of nerve-wracking to have when you're looking for somewhat, something with a lot of research behind it and a lot of, you know, being able to norm it, to, to be in comparison with outside of your own district and to look at that for students in different grade levels. So with Satchel Pulse, we were not able to choose these topics. These topics are aligned with CASL, and they are this collaborative academic social emotional learning platform. And we could not choose the questions. They are fixed, and the students can rate themselves. There is no teacher rating. The students rate themselves on a scale of one to 10. They actually, there's like a, a question and a scale that has a smiley face, and the kids manipulate the smiley face back and forth. You guys may have seen it. So this was given to Truman Middle School and 10th and 12th, again, that lower and higher level grade at the high school. And so no percentage here. It's just, here's our average score for, for our, for our students on a scale of one to 10. Now, this is average. We've sent some communication home to parents, and we use the median score because those outliers can really mess up your data when you're really thinking about where you are as a district. So, but nonetheless, this is how we share this information with our Student Life Committee as well. So the follow-up for social emotional screening where we are, after we received the individual students' reports, our scores, we did upload those into our student information system. We did send home parent communication. We have shared the questions with our families through district level, I guess, communication, building level communication, and then again, in the, in the follow-up with how to interpret your students' results. So I would say Student Life and administrators and teachers have been able to provide feedback throughout the entire process.
And I know that you've talked about how you've brought this to Student Life, but for those of us who are not on the committee, I think it's important to note how much work you've put into this with Student Life in particular, and that there has been so much conversation about what do we want to look at? What feedback do we want? How do we want this information to be given to parents? Like, there's been so much great conversation with so many different people, whether it be parents, students, administrators, board members. And I think that's just really important to note how much has gone into this. So thanks for that work.
I'll add to that. And we had a lot of discussion about tipping the lines of privacy, you know, when you ask the kids these questions. And so I think there's been a lot of thought put into that as well. So I think you guys did a good job.
Well, thank you so much. That, that means a lot because we do feel this is really important, but we were talking about this today. We don't want to start asking questions that we're not going to do anything with. And I think the, we were really intentional about what kind of questions we were going to ask students and, in ways that we could support them, so, thank you.
And it's great that we can celebrate all of these, but can you speak a little bit to kind of the intervention steps that we look at when we're looking at those kids that are at risk?
Sure, so we shared in the very beginning that we were going to use this data for two reasons. Like, overall, look at our district and building level, classroom level, program effectiveness. How are our class meetings? How are our flyer time? How's the pack time working for our students? Do we have the right resources in place? Are they aligned to what the data is telling us for our students' particular needs? So that was the big picture, how we were going to use it overall. We would call that in a multi-tier system, tier one. And then also, we talked about when we do start to identify students who are struggling and they maybe need, well, not maybe, they need additional support, whether it's in what we would call a tier two, just a little bit of support, or a tier three, a whole lot of support, we would have strategies in place that would align to those particular areas of concern and work with the teachers. And Maureen Stabler, Dr. Mason, our school counselors and social workers are all there to provide support. We are very rich in support for our students. And so when we do identify those particular areas of concern, it's about digging in deeper. This is a screener. It's like if you're going to the doctor, we're It's like if you're going to the doctor, we're taking your temperature, we're checking your pulse now. But sometimes when we notice there's a concern, we have to dig deeper. And so we're going to um go in and find out what are some of those lagging skills that a student may have? What would be a good strategy to go in and help the student? How, what is the outcome we want to see if we do put a strategy in place and how are we going to measure it along the way? So those are those um, those are the things that we have great resources to to use. And we have an entire um district social emotional toolbox um to support kids.
Um, quick question, sorry. So with those resources, especially at um like the higher education levels, like that tenth and twelfth grade you're talking about, um, is it more like intervention or do these individuals have to seek those resources themselves?
Is, you know, that is, i- i- it's a yes and thing. We do have interventions and it is also um, we want to create that environment where students can go and reach out because sometimes we don't know. Sometimes a student may need support but may not share that and or we cannot pull that from a particular survey. So it's a yes to both of those. We do have those interventions and also creating that culture where students feel comfortable to go in and seek help if they need it.
So and I just wanted, as you wrap up here, if you remember five years ago when we asked our community success measures, where does our work need to focus? Where do we need to put our efforts? This was the second most important thing that our community identified for us to make sure that we, and it's, you know, it's been a process, you know, and we had two years of a pandemic that slowed us down a little bit, but this work is going to be valuable because if, again, if people don't feel like they belong, they don't feel safe, they can never reach their academic potential. And that's what it's about. We want them to reach that academic potential, but we got to make sure we have all the supports in place to be able to do that. And again, high-quality teachers was number one, number two, and that was, uh, how many people? Close to eight hundred, I think, did that survey and social emotional learning was the second most important our community identified for us. So again, this is the work that our community said we needed to focus on, so.
Next slide. Okay, so I'll go um through this one, not as much. All right, so behavior risk assessment is our next. Um, this is more of an update for for um you all to understand some of the things that our administrators and our district has um been looking into. You will likely see a board policy um being brought to you soon, but we've done some work be um behind that um board policy to make sure that we would have all the appropriate things in place before it would be presented. Um, and mu- much of this is policy or no policy, a good practice for our administrators and schools to have in place to make sure that we are continuing that safe, supportive, and um collaborative culture for our students. So on July thirteenth um this past summer, the Center for Educational Safety came in and did a training for all of our administrators and our social workers, um school resource officers, our um district administrators, and they provided a training on behavior risk assessments and how we could consistently throughout our district make sure that we are looking at what is important when we're identifying behaviors that are are riskful for um, you know, risky student behaviors. And so the training was based on research that was brought to us from the U.S. Secret Service, Colorado Safety Resource Center, and the U.S. Department of Justice, FBI. So these were the um resources that the trainers cited for us and and brought in to share about how we as a district could um have a consistent way to support our students who are showing some um risky behaviors. If you go to the next slide, I wanted to share some of the outcomes of the training for this behavior risk assessment. Um, the outcomes were that we would establish this multidisciplinary team, define conserving, concerning and prohibiting prohibited behaviors and create a central reporting mechanism. And those were pretty much, that was the big part of the training, um really talking about how we could um involve safety plans for our students who are exhibiting behaviors that are risky and also for students who are victims of students who exhibit behaviors that are um risky. So tho- that was much of the training that we went through. The current status of that after the whole training is bring, we brought together a smaller team of administrators, Dr. Hamby, Dr. Segura, um our school secu- our director of um safety and security at building level administrators all got together and said that was a whole lot of training. So what does it look like now when we are in Limburg schools and how do we put a a process in place that um supports, you know, what we are really able to do? So what we have done since that training is we've developed a process and protocols for our district. So that means whenever we notice students are having um behaviors that are, in a sense, for lack of a better way to say, scary, you know, or we're really worried about um what those processes or what those concerning behaviors are going to manifest to, we have behavior risk screeners that our administrators can work through. If they feel like beyond the screener, there is a grave concern, they move on to a um well-developed full behavior risk assessment. Um, and also, or they can say through the screener, there's really no need for a full behavior risk assessment. Um, we also have safety plan templates in place for the um, I guess, for lack of a term, perpetrator and also for victims. And we have now a centralized place where we are monitoring and um collecting that information on students who are exhibiting those behaviors. So it's all in one place that that we all know and are sharing that with those that are are need-to-know um administrators. So definitely not as exciting, but something that is very important to um ensuring the safety a- at Limburg schools in all of our buildings and doing it in a way that is very consistent. So it's not one administrator is um, I guess, approaching a behavior risk in one way and another administrator is approaching it in a different way.
When you define what those behavior risks are, do you have a, just a diverse group of people looking at those to make sure that it's not just one group's view of what risk might be?
I'm so glad you asked that because it is when we have a multi- multidisciplinary team. So that is definitely the administrator and our social workers, but outside of that, there's definitely people that need to be involved. Sometimes it's a special school district case manager that needs to be involved in that particular situation, and sometimes it's a school counselor or depending on the um incident that happens, we may need a teacher involved in that. So the whole entire process not only gives us questions, guiding questions that are based on that research to move through to determine, is this something that needs to be, or is this something that is deeper and more concerning than we thought? Or is it just a joking statement that a student thought was funny but really wasn't funny in this day and age? Um, so it gives us those guiding questions to move through, but along with that, it gives us good questions and inter- interview-type questions that we would ask parents, getting the parents involved in the situation, um, you know, other teachers, other students possibly, involved in the conversation to determine what level of risk it is.
So instead of just individual administrators or people saying, oh, they were just kidding or whatever, we have a clear process that that's going to, that our teams will go through to evaluate that um, that statement, that those behaviors, whatever they may be. And so um MSBA drafted this policy. Um, I think it came out in the fall, right? So we just, we did this training this summer, we wanted to put the brakes on that, make sure that we got in front of you guys, um, just to make sure that um, you know, you knew this work was going on behind the scenes, but I just having a process and not just, you know, this building does it this way or this, we assess threat this way or hear that there's this process. And this will be a lot of our friend Terrell, um, doing this uh training for MSBA school districts. Um, so this will be under his um work at the state level and you'll see more and more districts across the state um develop these protocols um and have them in place in buildings. So just another step in school safety and security and good culture and good environment i- in our buildings. It's just another step.
All right, if we can go to the next slide. So here's another one of those areas of teaching and learning that crosses over with our human resources as we talk about recruitment and retention as well. So it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Mason.
All right, well, hello, everyone. Good evening. Uh, I've seen some of your faces in person before and for some of you, this is probably your first time seeing me in person. Um, but I wanted to give you just a little bit of background about me. Um, I come from an elementary background, potentially first and second mostly. Um, but I've had the pleasure of working in the public, the charter, the city and the county, uh, educational sectors. And so when you think about um being able to see varied nuances of inequity, I feel like I've been able to experience that at different levels. Uh, and then, most importantly, I just really share this passion for ensuring that all students and staff feel seen, heard, and valued. All right, next slide. All right, so when we think about our overall equity initiative in Limburg, it's to ensure that we're cultivating a sense of belonging and dignity for all of our staff and all of our students. And so one framework that we use in order to get there is through restorative practices. Um, and it's pretty much a framework that assists with learning and listening deeply to one another, um, to truly see those around us. Um, it's about sharing our own stories and perspectives and attempting to understand the perspectives of others. And so with restorative practices, uh, they have this thing called the big three. And so uh, the first one is belonging over inclusion. And the example that I typically give is if you were throwing a party, right? And you gave everyone an invitation to this party, however, when you get to this dance party, you have people that are sitting on the walls. And so belonging is really making sure that we're paying attention to the people that are sitting on the walls and inviting them over to our dance circle, um, so that they really feel like um they have a place. Uh, and then the next part of the big three is social engagement over control. And this idea is basically that um teachers are not the sole person in charge of students' learning. Um, there's a lot of peer learning that happens in classrooms and we really want to help to empower and elevate students' voices so that they are learning from one another. And then lastly, um, there's meaningful accountability. And so we really want to ensure that our students are um taking ownership and being responsible when it comes to the decisions that they're making. Um, and if they are making any mistakes, making part of, uh, making sure that they are a part of the solution. There are two um types of circles that we use. So this is a tool um that we use within restorative practices. Um, you have community circles and typically we want to focus on community circles um first because we really want to build up relationships and ensure that our environments are conducive to students feeling that sense of belonging. And then you also have harm circles. And harm circles you're going to use whenever you have like a disciplinary issue um that you really need to talk about. So that might just involve a few students. Next slide, please. When it comes to restorative practice training, um, we've pretty much have gone through four cohorts. Uh, it consists of three sessions. And so the goal is to do another four cohorts next semester, well, this semester. Um, but the first day, they're really just understanding what restorative practices is um and how they can utilize those circles in their classrooms. And so really understanding that within this framework, we're really um providing spaces that are safe and brave enough for our students to be able to talk about certain issues and really just talk about themselves. Um, for the second day of training, it's mostly about how you can implement those circles within your classroom. Um, there's an example of a circle would be like a need circle. And so just really going around and asking your students, what do you need from me as your teacher? What do you need from each other to ensure that you feel safe in this classroom? Um, and then the last training will just be kind of an hour zoom where we follow up and see how they've implemented those circles within their classroom. So far, we have trained forty-three staff members this year. Next slide. All right, so when we think about equity work from a district view, um, this is some of the work that I've done with staff. Um, and I'll highlight a few, but all of them are up there. Um, when it comes to Equity Champions, I know we had them last year, but I really wanted to dig and then define their roles and responsibilities because I feel like in different buildings, um, the way that they maybe viewed their role was different. And so we kind of normed their roles and responsibilities for the year. We're also going through a book study called Start Here, Start Now. And they're also curating um a resource hub um where they'll put just a bunch of equity lessons, podcasts, books, and resources for teachers to be able to access easily and quickly. And then we're kind of building that up this year and hopefully we'll have it ready next year. Um, and that'll also kind of support the administrators um with their work because the goal was to have um each semester, each building administrator would come up with an equity initiative for that semester. And so we're really hoping that they can pair with the Equity Champions in order to make that um initiative or to bring it to fruition essentially. Uh, and then with our staff of color in our district, um, as of right now, we have about five percent of our population that identify as staff of color and that includes our um American Indian population, Asian American, and Pacific Islander, African American and Hispanic, um, multiracial and biracial. And so with that group of staff, we really want to make sure that they're not feeling like they're working in silos. And when we go back to that um cultivating a sense of belonging piece, I think it's really important um to get them in a space at least once a quarter, um, just to meet each other, greet, talk about their experiences, and just to know that they're not in this work alone. I know they have the broader Limburg community, but I also want them to know that that they have a community within a community as well. Um, and then I believe it'll also help us with our HR goals when it comes to retain uh retaining our staff of color. Um, I think it's really important to focus on the staff that we have here and then kind of build on that and think about recruitment um ongoing.
Can I jump in? Because I, this is, this stuck with me. So when we talked about the affinity group and what's that next group of?
Right.
And you said male teachers at the elementary level. And you think about that, when you think about how many few males there are in our elementary and having a group where they can share and just come together and talk, I just, I thought that was great. So I just wanted to say that.
Absolutely. And essentially, it's just a group where you share a common interest. And so we're already, we already have some of these groups, like when we think about um our gifted students, um, when we think about students receiving intervention, we already kind of group them off of certain commonalities or shared interests. Um, and this is just another way to intentionally do that so that we can meet the needs of our staff. Uh, and then lastly, with our district equity committee, I'm really focused on making equity visible, um, because I feel like we can kind of talk about the work all day. Um, but when it comes to like understanding what it might look like or translate to within a school building, I thought it was really important that we kind of use our district equity committee to get into school buildings and actually use this resource um called an Equity Walk to assess just like maybe the cultural signage that you see in the building. What messaging do you see in the building that cultivates a sense of belonging? For example, that message I have here, be here, be you, belong. Um, and so that is just another tool that we're using to really kind of bring some of the great things that are already within our schools and then kind of share those resources with our Equity Champions so they can put it into that Equity Hub uh that I talked about earlier. Next slide, thank you. Uh, and then lastly, when it comes to the work that I've done with students, um, when we think about early childcare and that age level, it's really about recognizing and celebrating differences. At that age, students already can see, wow, you have different hair than me or your eye color is a different color. And it's really about recognizing that and celebrating it because it's okay, we're all different. Um, and we really want to make sure um that we're sending a message that differences are great and they should be celebrated. Um, at the elementary level, we are of course doing the restorative circles at all levels. Um, but at the elementary level, uh, we were fortunate enough to do an um a lesson where we talked about equity versus equality. And I feel like there's a lot of misconceptions when it comes to the two. And so we came up with this lesson uh for the fifth grade team at Kinnearley where we gave the scenario that if you were throwing a shoe party, right? Or let's say a shoe company threw a party for your classroom. And the only caveat was that they were only going to give everyone a size seven shoe. Now, that's equality, right? Everybody's going to get the same thing. However, if you were a size five, that is not what you need. What are you going to do with that shoe? And so equity is really moving towards understanding that everybody needs a different size. And so equality is giving everyone a shoe, but equity is giving everyone a shoe that fits. And so that was a lesson that we were able to come with, come up with to really get students to understand um just the difference between equity and equality. And it was also really nice because the teacher was able to print off different uh types of shoes and also they had blank papers so that students could come up with their own style of shoe. Um, at our middle school level, we have um the Echo Club, um, and they have really taken restorative circles to the next level. Um, they meet weekly and from those restorative practice circles, any issues that come up, they meet again later in the week and they come up with different action steps um in order to bring um any of those issues to light and kind of um come up with solutions for those actions. And then lastly, at the high school level, I've been fortunate enough to work with um a few of our student groups such as CAPS, which a few of our students here on the board are part of, which is the College Advice Peer Tutoring and Preparation Club, um Apex, which is our Asian Pacific Islander Club, our Black Student Union Club, and then Gender Equity Club. And this year, we're um working on um putting together Equity Night. And the staple of the Equity Night will be um inclusion. And so it'll be really nice to see what they come up with, um, and just kind of see why inclusion has been so important to their educational journey um in regards to them belonging in Limburg.
Uh, if I could just jump in real quick, those em- Equity Champions that you were talking about, does that include the lead parent group or is that just Limburg staff? does that include the lead parent group or is that just Lindbergh staff?
It's just Lindbergh staff, and so right now, we have one in every school building.
Okay. And then second, as a high school student, I can definitely personally testify that Dr. Mason is doing great work.
Thank you, so sweet. All right, next slide. That's all I have, so any questions?
I just want to comment because I think I really want to compliment Sharaya on the work with Equity Committee. The fact that we implemented our first Equity Walk this year was really huge. Getting to go around and look at a building and look at it through the lens of what we call windows and mirrors, how do students see themselves reflected? And how do they see opportunities to learn about the variety of cultures and experiences that their peers have? So it was a really great way to spur that conversation and to think about how we take ideas that are happening in one building and transfer them to other places around the district. Very impactful.
All right, next slide. Thank you both so much. All right, another component of our compass goal with regard to safe collaborative and supportive environment has been about instructional time. So there's actually two pieces that I'm going to, I'm going to share with you tonight with regard to our research around instructional time. I'm going to take us back a couple of years ago to our school start time work, which we started in the 1920s school year with a committee that went through the entire design thinking process, really looked at research around school start times and what was appropriate for times that students should be attending school. We continued that into the 2021 school year, surveying families, and ultimately making a recommendation that we put into effect last year. So when you look at this chart that's on the screen right now, you can see the previous school day, what we were doing pre, essentially pre-pandemic, I guess you would say, and then where we are currently with our school start times. So last year was our first year of implementation of the new times. And in the fall of last year, we did a very comprehensive survey with our families, our students, our teachers to really get a sense of, okay, how is this working for you? Give us feedback. We knew we had a couple of hiccups early on that we were working through and continued to resolve. But we wanted to also know what was the impact on families, community, et cetera, which led us to then reconvene our task force last year and say, we need to do a deeper dive on what are some options? Because there were some themes that came out of that survey. One theme was that while we added time at the elementary level, the time that was added was at the end of the day. And teacher feedback was that it wasn't really having the instructional impact that they wanted it to have. So how could we try to push some of that instructional time a little earlier as opposed to starting at 8:55? So that was one key piece of feedback. Another piece of feedback, which I think is really sweet, is middle school said, we want to start later too. And I think it's sweet because I think they also still wanted to get out at the same time. And they didn't realize there's a correlation between those two. But there were definitely concerns around the shuttles for our middle school students and what that was doing to schedules, et cetera, and just the complicated nature of the shuttles. So those were a couple of key pieces of information. High school feedback was really strong. The eight to three was something that was definitely really well appreciated. And I feel like one thing I need to share in this is when you look at what was happening for students in terms of what time they were starting their day before we changed these times, when we look at our transportation schedule, we had most of our school buses starting picking up students at 6:00 AM. Now, since we've made this change, it is very rare for students to be picked up before 7:00 AM. So even though our, if you look at that high school time, you know, we started at 7:25, we moved the time to 8 o'clock. But our high school and our middle school students share the same bus. So that same bus has to get middle school students to school at 7:40. So it really, when you think about transportation, was a 15-minute shift in terms of transportation for the secondary level. But yet, the impact universally was huge for all kids, middle and high school. So that was a key piece of data that we looked at recently. When you go to the next slide, it kind of just talks about where we were when we met in December. So the task force met last school year, in the 2122 school year, to review the survey data and say, okay, we need to look deeper at what are some options? How could we solve the problems that have come up based on the feedback in the survey? So we spent time really digging into transportation efficiencies and looking at how could we maybe get creative and make it so that middle school could start later, but maybe we wouldn't have too much of an impact on the high school? How could we look at elementary starting a little earlier? Again, how do we make that work with the transportation limitations that we have? So a lot of data analysis happened, a lot of analyzation of transportation options happened. Ultimately, I mean, if we're looking at doing anything major with transportation, we are looking at millions of dollars to shift transportation to have something that would be drastically different than what we have in place currently. And when you take away, when you use dollars there, you're taking away those dollars from some other way of supporting students. So we're working to find the balance there. Some of the other conversations that came up were specifically around the high school at the end of the day and the fact that we've got high school students who are walking through parking lots, who are exiting the campus. At the same time, we have buses still entering the campus from the middle schools. At the same time, we have students getting, middle school students getting off of buses and going to the shuttle that's going to take them home. And again, buses are still getting on that campus. So definitely a lot of conversations around high school safety and middle school students on the high school campus and the safety of that. And in our conversation, as we talked about, knowing that there are changes that are coming to the high school campus as we finish construction over the next year or so, those things weren't something we thought would be mitigated by the change in our construction practices too. These were going to be ongoing concerns. So our focus in the conversation when the task force met last, in this previous December, December 14th, was really about how do we prioritize student learning and how do we ensure student safety? And so there is a recommended shift for next school year in terms of school start times. So if you look at the next slide, you'll see, again, if we're looking at prioritizing student instructional needs, remaining cost-effective, and improving student safety, that our recommendation is to shift elementary for the next year from an 8:55 start time to an 8:45 start time. So that'll gain 10 more instructional high-quality minutes in the morning, gets us back to where we were in terms of a school start time pre-pandemic. It still makes the end of the school day a little later than it was before because we did add 10 instructional minutes with this change. So we're looking at 8:45 to 3:35 as our recommendation for next year. And then for the secondary, we are recommending, whoops, I lost my screen I was looking at. That one went out. I can move to another one. Oh, nope, there goes the other one. Now I'll be looking at the screen in front of my face. We are looking while that gets resolved. We are looking at essentially flip-flopping the order of middle and high school. And I say essentially because right now, middle school has to start at 7:40 in order for the high school to start at 8 o'clock because traffic flow requires 20 minutes to get from a middle school to high school for drop-off. If we flip that order, we actually can shave five minutes off. So high school could start at 7:45 next year, and middle school could start at 8 o'clock. So we actually kind of push back the start time. We push back transportation needs potentially a little bit with that as well. General feedback from, I mean, I'll be honest with you, the task force was full consensus around this plan that it was the way to mitigate all the concerns of the survey from last year without causing any loss of what the gains had been previously with the changes that we had made. Our next step is we do want to send a community survey to really get feedback on what considerations do we need to take into account as we're making this recommendation and bringing this forward for final decision-making. We have spent some time talking and looking at some of the issues that could potentially occur as a result. I know we've talked with, for instance, we've got St. Catherine's, who's a neighboring non-public parochial school. They were impacted when we changed our school start times. So we've already started that conversation with them about the fact that we've got another change on the table. So those community partnerships are a conversation point, as is talking about the impact for our students who attend alternative programs or specialized programs like South Tech. So we feel like, we feel really good in terms of the nuanced components of making this switch. But we also really want to recognize that there's other perspectives out there that we wanted to ensure we take into consideration. So the plan is within the next week or so to share this out to our school communities, offer that survey to garner some initial feedback, and then come back with a final recommendation in the next couple of months. Any questions?
And then I think we'll take a five-minute break before we move on to the next topic. Does that go with everyone?
Yes. Thanks, Ed.
All right, Dr. Sparks?
All right, we are joined by Dr. Segura and Dr. Hamby to talk about our collaborative assessment instructional practices goal related to standards-based learning and a guaranteed and viable curriculum.
Your bullet points first.
Compass School, 100% implementation of elementary proficiency skills. Done.
Done.
Oh, hold on, I'm not done.
Oh, that was just the first bullet. So we have, we fully implemented proficiency scales for all subjects in elementary schools, along with a new report card system this year. It's going as well as could be expected. I mean, it's not perfect. There'll be revisions that we'll make over the summer. There might be some standards we add to the progress reports. There might be some we take off. I know there's some that are kind of combined, we might split them apart. We'll make revisions to any language in the proficiency scales as far as learning targets that after we've done it for a year, we need to change this. So get feedback in the spring. But overall, I think things have been going very well.
I'm curious if we are planning any way to collect feedback from parents in this process?
So I've had multiple times put out a Google form to the parents from the beginning of the school year with Beth. It's still open. Tried to put it out there, principals put it out in their e-notes as well. My, I did a video where it's my email address. That was shared again at Curriculum Nights and the first round of conferences. So I've put it out there as much as I think I can. Had six total questions for the year. Those all came at the very beginning. So I tried to put my email address in contact out there for anyone who has questions because I want it to be a consistent message for the district, not from this teacher and this teacher and this teacher. So that was the thought process behind it, everything coming to me versus individual buildings or teachers.
That makes sense.
Were there questions before report cards came out?
Yeah, they, I think I had one. So five of them were early, and then one was after report cards came out. Able to answer everybody's questions pretty easily. All legit, you know, rightful questions for the first year with this system. But I think the teachers, the building admin have done a great job of, you know, communicating the changes. And I'll be honest, it wasn't a huge leap for elementary. Primary was kind of doing it already anyway. Intermediate kids had just been in primary. So it wasn't like we were turning everything upside down. And I think parents, what I've heard positives is they're getting more information about exactly where their kids are in their learning. I can use one example of a fifth grade student where, I'll use my daughter, who's in university, that she still chases points. Oh, I've got to get this many points on the final to get a B. Not learning, she's chasing points. Whereas this fifth grade student for someone, one of our employees, and she was like, well, my son said, well, he's learned this, but he still needs to work on this. So it's away from chasing points in that grade to what have I learned? What do I still need to learn? And that's exactly what we wanted.
So the principals also had the information in all of their newsletters. And so you feel like they received most of the questions rather than?
No, it was coming to me. So they were directing it all to me.
Okay.
I don't trust them to answer those questions.
And even the communication that we provided to teachers that they put in their newsletters and their presentations directed questions to that Google form as well.
Okay, cool.
I put it in the video, and there's a QR code in the video that leads you to that forum so I could pause it and take pictures.
What did the teachers think in actually trying to grade this way? Were they feeling like they knew how to do it?
So there was a great deal of anxiety before we started. And I told them, everything's going to be okay. The world will continue to spin. And it does, I think they, so we're in the midst of, we had some professional learning. We brought them in in November or October, and we are doing it again right now. So they get a chance to meet with grade-level teachers from the other buildings and work on some grading calibration. And they're not complaining in any way, shape, or form. So I'm not saying they enjoy it, giving more grades and collecting all this evidence. But they were really already doing it. They just, we kind of formalized it. They were informally already taking all these notes, and they knew where their kids. They were informally already taking all these notes and they knew where their kids were. We've just kind of formalized it, like, well, let's make sure we're documenting exactly where they're at in their learning.
When you say grading calibration, you mean calibration? You mean, but do you have like a few of the same paper that all the teachers grade and they?
Yeah, so one of the things we were doing, so fifth grade was in yesterday and it was writing, so it was an opinion writing piece. So, if we want to make sure that Ronnie and I, when we, we look at the same paper, we're kind of looking at the same way of this, is this mastery, is this nearing mastery? Is it still developing? Versus if we never get together, you know, she might consider it mastery and I call it still developing, we need to have a conversation of why. It's also why we've never had in the past, but we have scoring guides for our math common assessments, because it's like, here's how to score it. Exactly. So, they have a lot more guidance. And I think teachers appreciate, we've unpacked the standards and then defined exactly what mastery is. So, there's no guesswork in it. It's all spelled out for them.
I know when we've talked about this at our Teaching and Learning Board Advisory Committee, some of the feedback from teachers and parents particularly at the higher levels is how this translates to like transcripts and college readiness. How are those kinks looking?
I'll take it from here.
That's probably our next.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm jumping.
Great segue.
Perfect question.
Just moving it along.
So, at the secondary level, that's one of the most challenging questions for us to answer because grades are communication, but at the high school level especially, grades carry much more impact than just communication to the student and parent. Obviously, they're also communicating to higher ed, post-secondary institutions. They're telling a story about a student and we want to make sure that they are accurately and fairly telling the story of that student's learning. So, at the secondary level, there are several things happening at one time as we move toward more standards-based learning. It is, it continues to be embedded in our curriculum development process. So, for example, our English courses wrote curriculum two years ago. This year, they've been developing assessments. Dr. Lawson does a lot of that work with our teacher groups when they get to that assessment writing phase of aligning their assessments with the standards and developing them in a way that the assessment itself becomes a communication tool as well to students and Secondary education has been very traditional for a very long time. So, there is, and has not, I would say naturally lended itself to a standards-based learning model. And so, there, there's a little, a little more to unwind here as we try to move down that road. And like the example of Craig's Daughter, get our students focused on the learning, not focused on accumulating points for a certain grade. I say that, but the grades of course matter. They're, they're going to matter to our high school students and to our parents. And, you know, as a parent myself, I would love to say like, it doesn't matter, it does. And I'm sure when my kids get to high school, they'll feel the same way. So, in addition to the curriculum cycle work that is happening, this year, this school year, we started this year using our guiding principles for standards-based learning. And those were developed by staff and shared with all staff last spring, shared again this fall. And those are some basic philosophical statements about grading practices, things like students should have multiple attempts to show that they've mastered their learning, that we should, within reason, allow students to submit evidence of learning past a deadline. And I say within reason, that doesn't mean until the end of the semester. But if the goal is really to collect from our students evidence that they have learned and mastered the standards, then we can't truly give a grade if we don't have that evidence. And so, there, there's been a learning curve with that, certainly. This year, I think there've been a lot of growing pains for staff, students, and parents because it is different, it's uncomfortable. It is, I know for our teachers especially, it is overwhelming at times to keep up with the cycle of, of students retaking assessments. And so, we've kept that conversation open with students, parents, and teachers along the way, what's working, what isn't? And we've tweaked things at semester. We have some of our departments or our courses that actually have been doing this for a few years and it's been nice for them to share their experiences with colleagues and say, it gets easier, that the first year or two is very difficult because you feel like you're creating a lot of new content and you're, you're developing those, those routines to keep it manageable and then it does get easier. I will say that having those guiding principles in place came with an expectation that a professional learning community, so in other words, the teachers that teach the same course, that they're making those decisions together about what are our deadlines, what are our expectations, how are we managing this? And while there may be some, still certainly an adjustment period to things that are different, I can confidently say that our grading practices are probably more standardized within a content area than they've ever been. You know, historically, whatever teacher's classroom you landed in, you were following a completely different grade scale. So, maybe it's weighted categories over here where my tests count for 80% and maybe over here in this teacher's class, homework is 50%. Maybe they do running point totals, maybe this teacher averages everything. And that was true even within a single course. You might have seven teachers teaching the course and seven different versions of how a student's being graded. And so, we've, we have made a lot of progress in tightening that up, but it is, it's difficult at middle and high school because we have, in the curriculum cycle, departments that are in different areas, some that have proficiency scales because they've done the work of prioritizing standards and, and they, you know, that's, that was their place in the curriculum cycle where they kind of came through the cycle and that learning was part of it. We have other departments that still have to go through that process. So, what we're really focused on this semester and preparing for next year is that we have now the, the insertion of a new grade book that we're weaving into this process because the grade book, while it's just a tool, it really does matter when it comes to our grading practices because we can't ask teachers to take on practices that are not reflected in the communication tool to parents and students. So, we have a team of about 25 teachers, our instructional coaches, administrators, that will be getting together three times this spring. We will be doing a deep dive with Infinite Campus of what does their grade book look like, what tools are accessible to us, how does that work with the grading practices that we are, we are adopting at, at the secondary level? And when I say grading practices, again, I say that very carefully because it's not prescribed grade scales, it's things about pairing this grade book and what you're doing with things like retakes and late work and where do those, those, those dates, those deadlines fall into your grade book? We have a lot of questions to answer. You know, we want to know from the, the people on this committee, but also from our, our student and parent community, what would you like the grade book to look like so that it makes sense to you? So, it communicates to you better what your student is learning. So, we may decide that we want to standardize the language we use in a grade book, whether it's formative and summative assessments or informal and formal assessments and, and how much of that counts in that final term grade? What do those calculations look like? So, there are places we can tighten this up where things will be the same from course to course, from department to department with the knowledge that they're still going to be in different places in their, in the development of their proficiency skills. We want to try to help support our staff and students and align some of our processes for things like retakes. We don't want anyone to feel overwhelmed. We also want our students to develop good habits along with this. And so, we want to make sure that whatever our processes are for those, encourage our students to focus on the learning and not to, in a sense, triage what they need to do. And I can retake this, so I'm not going to study here, I'm going to study here because I know I get more retakes there. We want it to be about the learning. And so, so how do we clean up those practices and make sure that our communication with the students is where it needs to be? And then a big, big technology piece of this, which will also be looked at by our, our team of 25, is what's the Canvas integration piece? Because Canvas itself has a grade book, it does sync with Tyler SIS right now, it will sync with Infinite Campus, but we don't yet know the depth of how it will sync in a standards-based version of grading. And so, we have a lot to learn, we've got a lot of research we need to do on what this will all look like. And our, our goal is to meet, we're meeting in February, March, and April, that by early April, when our staff gathers for their final professional learning day of the year, we'll be able to roll out to staff, all of whom will have had chances to give feedback on what this looks like, essentially a plan for the grade book for next year and how this ties into their practices and making sure that, that the tool is supporting the direction that we want to go in the classroom. Our instructional coaches have been great in helping with this, they have some plans to work with our teachers coming up on just taking a bird's eye view of their assessments and standards and where are we assessing those standards throughout the year? How many times does it show up? Making sure that, that our practices, that what we're saying is what's showing up and the work that we're doing with our students.
I want to add one thing since Ronnie was talking about that. It, it took four years for elementary to get. We've been working on this for four years, we didn't just start this this summer. So, it, it was a lengthy process to get where we at, where I can say it's going pretty well.
So, where I'm struggling is with, you said not all departments and teachers and classes have proficiency scales. And so, I feel like when we have some staff in some classes using, using a standards-based grading system that then transfers to a percentage point, but we don't have those proficiency scales, we're kind of putting the horse, or the cart before the horse, right?
So, the courses that are using the zero to four do have proficiency scales?
But I feel like there are also some courses that are using parts of standard-based grading within their philosophy of the class. Does that make sense? And so, that's where I'm also struggling.
Sure.
Because I'm not, right, you're getting not all of the benefits of it, but you're getting some of the pieces that are, that's taken away because you're using standard-based grading. So, you're losing the benefit from a traditional system, but not getting all the benefit from a standards-based grading system.
Sure. No, I understand. And I think, so the, the guiding principles for the year should benefit everybody. So, at, at a minimum, this baseline of students have multiple attempts to show their learning, they're not penalized by things they used to be penalized for that really were more about work ethic and habits than they were about learning, that should benefit everybody. But we are in different places and that's something we're working through because our, you know, we certainly have a philosophy of do no harm, we don't want any students to be harmed by this system. But it is different in that the focus on the learning is a higher expectation than probably what most students are used to because, you know, I think we all went through traditional education systems where there were ways to raise your grade without necessarily learning more. And that is some of what has been pulled out of, of the system that we are, are shifting toward. To your point about using a zero to four scale and that having to translate to a traditional A through F scale, that is a huge open question that we're going to be taking up this spring because again, not all teachers are doing that, but for those that are, we want to make sure that they're doing it fairly. We have seen lots of different versions of this. I mean, there are conversion scales out there of what a zero to four looks like on an A through F scale, how that translates to a percentage or a letter grade. I don't see a, a future immediately in which we can get away from letter grades at the high school level because our students are applying to universities and that's what needs to be on their transcript right now. You know, maybe that's not a forever case, but it certainly is right now. So, though, I think there are certainly, we've, there are mistakes that have been made along the way that we've learned from and we're trying to tighten some of that up. But that, the question you ask about that conversion piece is really challenging because there are many different directions you can go. And one thing that we have heard when we first started this journey, we talked to other districts that were doing it, a couple of things that were said over and over again. One is you can't just flip a switch and tell your teachers you're doing this system because it requires a lot of buy-in and a lot of support and a lot of deep understanding of why we're doing what we're doing and what that looks like on an assignment, an assessment, a report card. So, it takes a lot of time. The other part of this is that it is human nature for students to be motivated by grades because of what comes after high school. And so, when we, we know our students, we want them to be motivated by learning, but we can't take out the piece where they're motivated by grades. So, how do you make sure your grade system is one that still motivates them to learn and that they don't just tap out and I did what I needed to do and I got the grade and I can go home? We want students to be in constant pursuit of learning. And so, we don't want there to be a plateau. And so, that's, that's a difficult part as well because, you know, you have a range of 100 points on one scale, you have a range of four points on another. And so, how do we make sure that we are not unintentionally harming our students' motivation, but also not unintentionally harming the grade that goes on their report card? And if anybody has all of the answers to this and has seen it done perfectly in a high school, I welcome you to send me your plan and, and we will adopt it because there are about 1,000 different ways to do this. And I think we are trying about 900 of them right now, so.
And I would add, we, the work that we're doing, it's not something that we're creating in-house from scratch, right? It's like, we have partnered with, Brian mentioned, high reliability schools earlier, that's all part of Marzano's research. Marzano is a key component of educational research, meta-analysis, lot of data behind the work that happens in Marzano's research. So, we're partnering with, with them in all of the work that we're doing here. You'll also hear a thread of that as we talk about success-ready schools, skills, schools network. And then also looking into, we have a research partner, EAB. So, we've asked them to delve in a little bit deeper to see what research is there outside of what we already are familiar with, with Marzano. So, as we continue to make these decisions, we're doing it from a really strong research base.
What districts? You mentioned that some districts around the area are already doing it. Can you name a few of them?
Not, so, I'm not familiar with any locally that have gone all in. But there are, there's a district in Nebraska that has, that we've used as a model, there's a district in Ohio that we've used as a model. These are just examples that, of like grade scale conversions that I'm thinking of, you know, from conferences I attended.
Well, but there are some that are kind of using a standards-based grading, right?
There are some that are using a standards-based grading. I have seen a report, like in terms of, let me say, standards referenced reporting. So, like what elementary is doing, a standards reference report card. It's not uncommon at the middle school level. There are many middle schools that are doing it. It is still very uncommon at the high school level. And where it has been applied, it seems to be applied somewhat unevenly where they may be using the scale, but there, there's, you get to, generally in high schools, I think there's a little more autonomy within departments. And so, that's some of the feedback we've seen from other districts is we've left it up to departments, they have their own individual way of applying it. And so, that's, just recently, there was actually a local survey that went out through one of our curriculum organizations. And that was a lot of what we saw at the high school level was varies by department was the most common answer on that survey.
Is there some way that we can like note on the report card that we're using this system? Because my fear, and I, I agree with the standards-based grading, I think it more reflects whether, whether the students are learning. But my fear is that if, if it's holding them to higher expectations and making them learn more, which is great, how does that translate to when they apply to a college that has no idea what standards-based learning is and they see that, oh, the kid from Kirkwood got in a 5.0 or whatever, the kid from Limburg got a three or, you know, whatever, however you denote it on the report card? Is there some message that goes along with this that gets given to the people who are, who are after high school looking at this transcript?
That's a great question. I, I don't know the answer. I do know that historically, when transcripts are forwarded to universities, I believe in the past, like there is something that if, for example, we have weighted grades at our high school for honors and AP courses. So, there's an explanation that accompanies that of which courses are weighted and it's noted there. So, something similar, I think, like that would be really helpful to note, you know, these are, these courses were graded on a standards-based scale versus a traditional scale. But I can certainly look into that and see if there's a model for that elsewhere.
I actually know firsthand a little bit about that since I'm a high school senior. If y'all know Ms. Keegan, Kate Keegan at the high school, she's the College and Career Counselor. She sends along a school report which talks about like Limburg's demographics, our grading system, and other student makeup, which goes with, along with your common application out to all the universities.
And what I would say too, we are not there, but as you do any kind of research about college admission, how universities across the country are moving away from the grade or the standardized test score or whatever that is, we had a visiting, visioning session here Friday and we had somebody that serves on higher ed college board that basically said, it's that essay. And again, we're not there, so we have to find that balance of making sure our kids still are getting what it is they want, but we're also moving that direction. And when you think about that learning and those opportunities, that's, you know, what do grades reflect? You know, and, and we've asked that question, you know? When I was a kid growing up, I could, you know, if I had a teacher, man, I could do a lot of extra credit. Well, was I really learning or was it grade inflation? You know, and so, we just really, what does that look like? We have ways to teach that work ethic and, and those kinds of things and measure that as well. So, it's, you know, finding, finding that balance, but it's really getting to be, how are kids living outside of the classroom? Meaning, you know, did they develop a patent in high school? Did they do 600 hours of community service? Did they, you know, were they leaders in these different clubs and opportunities? So, it's really, you know, all of that, but we have to make sure we don't harm our kids as we begin to make this, I'll just say it, pivot into something that we feel is better for kids as we move forward, so.
All right, this has turned into the Teaching and Learning Show. I thought we'd be done by like 5:30. I'm so sorry, I still have one more topic. So, if we can go on to the next slide, I'm going to try to do an abbreviated version of this, but I also know how incredibly it is and important it is that our community is aware of the work we're doing at the state level with the Success Ready Schools Network. So, we are one of 25 school districts who were selected to be a part of the system design zone for, for the Success Ready Schools Network. And essentially what the Success Ready Schools Network is, it started as a grassroots movement around redesigning assessment, knowing that the, the current assessment system we have as a state, the MAP program is antiquated, it's a one-time-a-year It's a one time a year autopsy. It doesn't really focus assessment for learning and to support learning and student growth and development, but rather a way to really just be a straight up accountability measure with little impact specifically to students. So statewide, there was a consortium, the Missouri Assessment Partnership with every region of the state, various urban, suburban, rural districts representing saying, we need to make a change in what we're doing in terms of the systems of learning within the state of Missouri. It then got some additional teeth behind it last year when Senate bill, I believe, 681 included a focus on competency based learning and even some money behind it for the state to say, we need to look at how learning evolves in this district and, or in this state and how we meet kids' needs and help to accelerate kids based on where they are as opposed to this kind of general one size fits all program. So what you see here on this slide are the districts who are in the system design zone. So you can see some local districts as well as some across the district or across the state. And then as we go to the next slide, you can see kind of the work of the success ready students network. So we're looking at reimagining and redesigning assessment systems, supporting innovation. In addition to the 25 system design zone districts, there are also a number of districts who have joined to be innovation zones where they are looking to glean professional learning and support for continuing to grow opportunities for students. And those opportunities really include engaging business partnerships, expanding real world learning, all the things that we've talked about as a district that we know our kids need. But ultimately that's going to require some policy changes too. So what, basically what we do with this is we say, and it's very similar to standards based learning, what are the skills? What's the knowledge? What dispositions do students need to have to be successful in life? And then how do we create a system around that? How do we make professional learning connected to it? How do we make our assessment systems connected to it? How does policy change? How are schools evaluated or districts evaluated based on those things? And then continue to grow and develop our programs. So then as we go to the next slide, one of the long-term, and I really want to emphasize the long-term goals of this work is competency based learning, that we're engaging students in those knowledge, skills and dispositions to have them ready for whatever it is in life. But as we go to the next slide, when you start to look at competency based learning, if you look at bullet number four or number four there, students progress based on evidence of mastery, not seat time. Again, that is, that is a big picture shift in education. Right now, we have always been used to, you do kindergarten, you do first grade, you do second grade. We are far from a system that looks different, but there are models out there that exist, some within our own current programs. PEGs would be a perfect example of a competency based program for our exceptionally gifted students where they pace and move forward outside of a traditional grade span that we see in place. But when you look at the state's goals with the success ready schools network, you can really see the work that we've been doing as a district over the past few years, the work we've been doing around rigor, around learning pathways, around evidence of, of learning, again, which goes back to standards based learning, the conversation we were having, meaningful assessment, the work we've done with FastBridge, NWEA, iReady. We take those assessments, we look at that data and we use that data to influence individual students. So continuing to further that work, not just at our district, but throughout the course of the state. And our next, the next slide kind of gives a little bit of a graphic detail about what I was referencing with regard to when you start to look at blurring the lines between grade levels, we're used to what we see on the right, like primary grades, early childhood, those are those foundational skills. And then once you get into intermediate grades at the elementary into middle school, you're looking more at course content readiness for high school. And then high school, you're starting to look at post-secondary readiness, but it's all very delineated by this grade, this grade, this grade. How do we start to blur the line so students can move in a way that's meeting their needs? And that's the work we've been doing as a district. That's part of personalized learning, but then it has broader implications for how you set up systems in schools that again, take time and that time starts with having really good systems with proficiency scales, with assessments. And that's the work of this particular network. I will say, I mentioned Marzano earlier. This network has partnered with Marzano as well. So the work we've been doing over the last few years is all aligning perfectly with where the state is going. So that is not accidental. That's been very intentional as we've thought about what's, what's next in supporting the learning and the growth of our students. So the next slide just really kind of gives, kind of a breakdown of those different pieces and those different elements of where the group is working right now. So we've got the innovation zones. We are in the process of redesigning an assessment system. That's what's happening right now. We're engaging stakeholders. Not only am I talking to you guys about this process right now, but we've been going around to faculty meetings and talking with our teachers so that they have a background. And when we say success ready schools network, they know what we're talking about. This was shared at parent leadership last week. Again, the, the work around standards based all lends itself to, to this work. And then if we go to the next slide, you can see the merge of what we've done. So our success skills, this is preparing students for life beyond the school environment. It's how you merge those content, specific skills that then blend in the four Cs and you start to support the work habits and the effort of our students, how that prepares them for the future. So again, all of this is tying in very beautifully together. And when we go to the next slide, an example of a proficiency scale. How can we say that we, that a student's ready to accelerate or needs additional support if we don't have a really clear way to delineate where they are right now and they're learning? So having those kind of foundational pieces are what guides us to be able to do this work statewide. So final slide on this, here's where we are right now. This, the system design zone group is in the current, is in the process of finalizing what's called a demonstration project. It's also known colloquially as a waiver that we anticipate will go to the state board of education in the spring. Basically what that waiver or the demonstration project is proposing is that districts can use their own, what are called through course assessments, those assessments that happen multiple times a year that you use to influence and impact what's learning opportunities kids have. So for us, that's something like NWEA or iReady or FastBridge. So providing those districts, those 25 districts that are in the system design zone opportunity to use their own data for state accountability in lieu of the MAP test. Because they do want to be focused on student growth. They do want the assessment data to be adaptive to what the students' needs are. Right now, you'll notice that it is, it is proposed to be grades three through eight. There's an opportunity to expand that into high school. We have end of course exams at the high school level right now. I predict that those will remain an accountability measure, but there's an opportunity in the future to expand that into high school assessments as well. If that is approved, here's what practically happens for us as a district. We will still give the MAP test because while we might have a state waiver, we don't yet have a federal waiver. So while the federal government allows for innovative assessment opportunities, we have to, we have to do some shoring up of what that system looks like at the state level first before we can propose a waiver at the federal level. So if the waiver is accepted, students would take the MAP test this year, but it would not count for state accountability. We would instead be looking at developing some type of dashboard with our own internal metrics. And then from there, we would expand to the federal waiver. But that's where we are right now, kind of the background of the work. There are a lot of different legs to this work, but the short term starts with, you have to have a good assessment system to measure where kids really are in order to be able to grow all of these other opportunities. Any questions? Feel like I raced through that because I know we're too short on time. All right. That's all for teaching and learning.
Got to be quick.
I just want to say mine is quick because teaching and learning is the focus of what we do every day. And when you look at business and operations, it's just the, how we get there, looking at maximizing resources and making sure we're efficient in how we handle things so that they can do everything that they need to do, which is a lot. So a lot of our compasses are tactical and the biggest ones for this year were focused on facilities. So Tara and her team can't do all the educating that they want to do without us, we want to have a safe and inviting environment for our students to learn in. We want to keep those current. So some of the bigger ones this year, at least for our department, is in the area of a future tax rate, no tax rate bond issue in April 2024, which that date keeps coming closer. So we have made progress on that goal with several steps that I've note within the workshop slide there about architects and construction and resolutions, which a lot of that you're going to see in our board meeting tonight. So we're making progress there. We're also making progress by meeting with groups, including our facility advisory committee and our finance team just last week, or was that this week? That, no, it was last week, that we had a lot of meetings up here to look at the future of our buildings, you know, for middle school and for our farmer's market. So we've been in a lot of data gathering mode, talking with building principals, talking with parents on our facility advisory committee in preparation to put something out for April 2024. Next slide. Along with that, along with that, as part of looking into a bond issue, because bond issues, you can't do that every year, but you want to do it as often enough when the equity in your home, our home, because we're never going to sell our home, is good enough where we can invest in our buildings. We're never going to sell to our buildings. We need these spaces to be current, safe, and I said inviting to our students so that education can happen. We don't have the operating funds really to take care of all the campuses. That's not what you're supposed to do with operating funds. So as we look forward to our Prop 2024, we are diving into HVAC, a lot of different units and different systems we use throughout the district, some more effective than others. And a time to correct some of those that we know are, are not working the best is a time when we are going to look into a bond issue. So we've been diving into an HVAC audit district wide to put an order of replacement on HVAC throughout the school district. That also goes for roofs, which is not anything that's very cheap. You don't want to use operating money to replace a roof. That could be a million dollars. So at the same time, we're doing those kinds of audits on our facilities as we prepare for our future no tax rate bond issue. One more slide. One of the items that is more of an operating item and not just facilities, I guess it could actually be both, is we know with the conclusion of our high school build, it's about 200,000 more square feet for our students. It's also an impressive building that is pretty state of the art and probably some unique cleaning things will be happening there. I always say, who's going to go dust on top of the LHS? You know, there's things that you don't see in every school because we're going to be a lot different high school than a more modern one than many in St. Louis, well, probably all in St. Louis. So as we're approaching the end of our project, we know that we're, our staffing is going to look a little bit different at the high school, our cleaning methods, the number of staff we have, just the HVAC units at the high school alone will necessitate with the filter changes, additional staff members to manage the high school on the HVAC. So as we were going down that course of looking at what we would need in staffing next year as far as custodial and maintenance, a lot of districts throughout the metro area are looking at outsourcing custodial. It's just one of those things that we want to look at and make sure that we're taking every opportunity we can to be as efficient as possible with our staffing. You know, labor in these type of areas has been a struggle for the last three years. So we do have a current bid out on the street and have had walkthroughs with some custodial outsourcing companies. Again, this is not something that Limburg was just looking at. I know Parkway's in the middle of it, SSD, just to see if they can do it better or how we can improve ours by, by working with a group like that. Our focus on our bid right now is just a, would be a pilot at the high school. We weren't looking at any other buildings across the district because we know this would be a big change. We're going to look at the data. We're not saying we want to change. We're not saying we don't want to change. We want to gather the data and move forward. We know it's going to look different in August and we want to be prepared. So that process is going on right now. And then do I have another one? Nope, that's it.
My turn.
Yes.
How many minutes do I have? Okay, here we go.
This go fast.
At the last workshop, we told you about our work on the Limburg High School Athletics logo, but we weren't quite complete and we rolled out that logo in November. So just wanted to update you with the completion of that project. If you look at the next slide, during the winter green and gold night, we unveiled the logo to the Limburg High School student body and have had a really good response to it. We'll go to the next slide and you can see that there's different versions of the logo that we've created that are being used for all of our different high school teams. So it's required use for all Misha sports at Limburg High School, and then we're strongly encouraging it for use by Misha activities and other clubs and activities at the high school. We're also using this logo with our Limburg Community Ed and rec. So already seeing it on a lot of different items and just excited about that more consistent brand that we've created. If you look at the next slide, you can just see how we customize it for each program. So each program has their own brand locker where they, they have all those files available. And then on the next slide, you'll see that we have a branding guide posted on our high school athletics website that's available for all of our clubs, groups, all of our vendors. It goes through in great detail exactly how to use it, what colors to use, and all of our style guides for the new logo at the high school. So we're really excited to, to launch that and have that new identity for the athletics program. Next slide. We have an editorial calendar in our communications department that we use to track our content. And this year, we've really been looking at it, trying to look at it strategically so that we can make sure we're covering all of our schools, all of our different programs, and that we're really doing a good job of communication across the board. So if you go to the next slide, you can see a screenshot of what this calendar looks like. And we track our stories based on what medium we're using, whether it's social media or website or press release, the department, area of focus, our strategic goals that are in our compass and our, our strategic plan. We track to see our success measures that we talked about earlier, those five success measures that our community has defined for us, how we're covering those, our Limburg Life success skills, and then also our stories by building. So if you go to the next slide, you can just see some quick data that shows us how we're, how those are shaking out this year as far as our strategic goals and academic talent, facilities, resource and communication, and then our success measures as well. So every time we do a story, then we're tagging which one of those we're covering. And if you go to the next slide, you'll see also how we've been tracking the Limburg Life success skills. This is something we've started tracking recently, so the numbers are not maybe quite representative of exactly what we're, what we've been covering. And I'll get to that with some of our ideas for improvement, but we're trying to just highlight those when we are covering them in our district. So the next slide shows you a breakdown of the stories by school building. And you can see that we're doing a pretty good job of reaching out to all the different schools. I want to thank our teachers because we have a Google form where they can fill out a form, let us know what's going on in their classrooms. And that's been a great source for us to just go out and highlight those different things that are happening. So the next slide, this is just our, as I mentioned, so as we reviewed this data and looked at it, I, I'm really proud of our team. We have social media content almost every single day, whether it's photos or a story, just putting updates on there. And we've also had 15 videos since the start of the school year, which is a big increase from previous years. And so just the amount of content that's coming out has been really good. And I feel like we've been working, we've been trying to work more intentionally with Tara and her team to highlight those areas of teaching and learning that are important for our community to understand and to, to understand the value and see how we are doing good things for kids and their learning. And so, but I did put in our, our growth area that we want to continue doing that and having them help us identify those specific success skills and areas where we can be highlighting their work. So we, we review this on a quarterly basis. We're, we're in there every week updating our content, but then we look at the data and just look to see where we can fill in holes or continue to communicate on different things. Any questions? Okay, two more things. They're fast. So we are implementing, we want to look strategically at our senior associates plan. We have a community engagement program that's been in this district for decades called Senior Associates. It's, it's an amazing program. It brings in senior citizens from our community for entertainment and information. We feed them. Before COVID, we were averaging between 100 and 200 in attendance every time. COVID really hurt us and we found it since we've come back that our attendance has really dropped. And so we want to reach out to our community and find out, how can we continue to engage well with that important group in our district who does not have children in the district, but still wants to stay connected? And it's important that we keep them informed. So if you look at the next slide, we're going to put a survey out this spring in our link newsletter to just reach out to that group. We'll put it on social media as well and in our e-notes and just find out from our seniors and our people who are in the district without kids in schools. Where do you get your information? How do you want to stay connected with our district? Maybe it doesn't look like breakfast every month and a student performance, but that might be a piece of it. You know, maybe it looks like discounted rates in community ed is something that we is something that we've brainstormed about for adult education or informational sessions. But we want to ask them, we want to find out and not, not assume. So, we can continue to reach out to that group. Next slide. Oh, so, sorry, we'll do the survey and then this summer, we're really planning to look into those responses and re-evaluate the program and continue to have a strong program for our senior citizen community. And our last goal, and this is really quick, is we are going to begin researching strategic planning services because the 23, 24 school year will be time to start talking about revising our five-year strategic plan for the district. So, we want to bring someone on board to do that who's qualified and can guide us through that process. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm assuming for the sake of time, we're going to pause our book discussion.
We are going to move it to our next workshop and do it at the beginning. If that's all right with everyone.
If I can just say really quickly, I do think it's important to know that we had over 50 community members who requested books and we had a Zoom back on January 4th inviting those community members to join us and have a conversation around the book. And there were about 15 people who joined us for that. So, we're going to do another one in February for the second half of the reading.
Do I have a motion to adjourn Board Workshop 1566? Motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Kristi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.